Good evening. I'd like to call them April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to order. I'll ask Commissioner Henderson if he would have tonight's invocation. Following that, I would ask Commissioner Cooper if he would lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Amen.
Thank you.
Whatever one bow to his, please. Most gracious and followed, we come before thee with thanksgiving in our heart. Excuse me. We know that you are truly a good God, one whom sits up high and look down low. Want to know what our needs are before we know what they are ourselves, and we come and ask that you guide us and lead us during this, this meeting that we're county commissioners meeting, to do your will, so that this community can be a better place for us all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the liberty of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our thought for the day, when we judge or criticize another person, it says nothing about that person, it merely says something about our own need to be critical. Winston Churchill. I'll ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. What? I'm sorry, we have one thing before that.
Madam Chair, before we move into the consent agenda, it has been requested that line item numbers twelve and fourteen, again, line item numbers twelve and fourteen be removed from the consent agenda, be removed for consideration as there is no need to proceed with these two items at this time. So with that being said, again, if we could ask that we move forward with the adoption of the agenda as written minus numbers twelve and fourteen.
Okay, thank you. Now, do we have a motion?
So move that stage.
Commission. Okay, we have a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion approved.
Madam Chair, at this time, we have number five, which would be considered citizen comments. This comment section is for agenda topics only. Again, this is for agenda topics only for our citizen comments. Each person will be allotted three minutes, which will be visible on the screen. And if the, if there is anyone who would like to make citizen comments for the agenda items, you may come at this time. You are allotted three minutes each.
Were there anyone, is there anyone that would like to make a comment tonight? Well, here we none, we'll move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item we have at this time that I have listed for you, that you presented to me, is the reports for the chairman. That is actually number six. And at this time, we just have one item. It is a proclamation of recognition for National County Government Month for the month of April. And I'll just read that proclamation into the minutes.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Proclamation, counties thrive, whereas the nation's three thousand sixty-nine counties, parishes, and boroughs, serving more than three hundred thirty million Americans, provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas, counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. And whereas, counties as intergovernmental partners enact local, state, and federal programs and initiatives to address the needs of all residents, visitors, and community partners. Whereas, Newton County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the wealth, well, excuse me, the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas, Newton County serves more than one hundred and twenty-two thousand residents and tens of thousands of visitors each year. And whereas, the departments and offices of Newton County employs approximately seven hundred and forty people to serve the county's residents in matters of public safety, the judiciary, transportation, development, and building, recreation, and other governmental services. And whereas, Newton County's elected officials represent their constituents with honesty and fairness. And whereas, Newton County being an exceptional place to live, work, play, and one of the finest counties in the country. And whereas, each year since nineteen ninety-one, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda D. Hayes, Newton County Board of Commissioners Chairman, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as National County Government Appreciation Month and encourage all county officials, employees, and residents to join me in appreciation for Newton County and the terrific people who keep it running each and every day. Counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. And National County Government Month is recognized for the month of April. We encourage all county officials, employees, and residents to join me in appreciation Newton County and again, the terrific people who keep it running each day and every day. Linda D. Hayes, the Honorable Chairman of Newton County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Ms. Hayes, the next item Chair, Madam Chair, we have on the agenda is listed as a report number seven, report from our interim county manager, Mr. James Brown.
Mr. Brown, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I would like to invite Ashley Best from our extension office to give us an update.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me this time to present and give an update about Newton County agriculture. I originally had it for the month of March because that's National Agriculture Month, but April will do. So what Extension does, we take the science of everyday living and translate it for homers, homeowners, farmers, and communities to foster a healthy and prosperous Georgia. That's our, our fancy mission motto, but really, we're, we're into building relationships, problem-solving, and, and going out and being that face, you know, I say it all the time, like you, you can Google a lot of these problems, but you don't have that face-to-face, research-based analytic behind it. So the Newton County farm gate value is over fifty-one million dollars. And the county jobs in agriculture is over eighteen hundred county jobs. So our top commodities are horses, beef cows, and straw. However, I will say there's a little caveat there. It's probably going to be organic fruit and vegetables next year because the fruits and vegetables are kind of spread out on different commodities, like organic squash, organic peppers. But I'm going to combine them, and it will be organic fruit and vegetables on the top commodities list next year. So last year, I did forty-three different site visits, two hundred and ninety diagnostic samples. And those are the, some of the onsite consultations topics that I did. Eighteen adult programs. And then I did five youth programs. I led a Muga class at the YMCA. It's like a cow yoga during Beef Month. We were talking about the importance of beef. And then I did eight invited presentations in and around the program, or in and around the county. One of my favorite ones was the Georgia DNR Building Outdoor Women's Course. And that was women from all across the state coming to Charlie Elliott to learn about agriculture and wildlife. Contacts, I had over nineteen hundred face-to-face contacts last year, five hundred phone calls, over nine hundred emails that I had to respond back to, not counting the UGA emails. But those are some of my topics that I address on a daily basis. Some of my accomplishments this year and accomplishments with my program, I was promoted to Public Service Associate. It'll be in July of twenty twenty-five. I was made aware of that last month. So that's, I'm considered a UGA faculty member, and so I have to kind of go through the promotion process with the public service outreach group. In twenty twenty-four, I was awarded the Young Professionals Award. I presented a poster in Texas at our national conference and all kinds of other accomplishments that you can read. But the one thing I'm most proud of is my equine programming. I do have a statewide equine resource. It's called Elevated Equine. And I was a twenty twenty-four National Award finalist for web page communications. And I recently started a podcast. It's called the Elevated Equine Podcast. Don't, I'm a little embarrassed because I, I don't really like listening to myself, but I think it's going to turn out really cool once we get into the groove of things and get some really cool guest speakers on there. Again, you know, continuing to produce our newsletter. We had five students compete at the State four H Horse Show and three advanced to Southern Regionals. This year, we have six students that will be competing at the State four H Horse Show in June. I do organic fruit and vegetable programming. I did host two extension agent trainings here in Newton County. So that's agents from all across the state came to Newton County to learn about organic farming. And I worked closely with all of our organic farmers here to do a tour, taste testing, demonstrations, things like that. So it worked out really, really well. I am a part of an on-farm research project at Love is Love in Mansfield. And then this past fall, I hosted a UGA Master Cattlemen's Course. We had over forty people certified as a Master Cattlemen, and it was an eight-week-long session. We had, it was one day a week, you know, every Monday evening, they came in and they learned from different beef experts and became certified master cattlemen. Another really large accomplishment, we had two hay producers from our county, Jim Galloway and Kevin Thompson. They worked together and they placed first in the southeastern hay contest, winter annual category. So that's all hay producers in the southeast that submitted their hay. The quality of their hay was the best, and they won the contest at the Sunbelt Ag Expo. Next is our Master Gardener activities. I have a brand-new Master Gardener group. They're volunteers, and they are wonderful people. I have seven total, two that are trained, or five that are trained and two that are trainees. So we have four active projects, two pollinator garden sites. And right here on Pace Street, next to the fire department, you will see our newly-installed demonstration garden on the cricket frog trail. We also have a large pile of soil that will be spread out into a pollinator garden under the tree. And that was with a partnership for UGA Archway. So we worked with several different groups to come up with that plan and, and have a landscape design made there. We helped manage the pollinator gardens at the Newton County Ag Center. And, and then also, we do have the welcome sign on Highway thirty-six. It's the welcome sign saying that we are the home of Georgia four H. So our, our volunteers are looking to do more in the community as we get more volunteers in. So I'd wanted to leave you with this photo. This is kind of typical for me. Someone brought in their whole Hoover vacuum and said, can you identify what's in that Hoover vacuum for me? So I had to open it up, and it was actually just like a little European hornet there. And they, it's pretty common. I've had snakes on my desk. I have, you know, all kinds of things left in the refrigerator for me to identify and diagnose, so. But thank you all so much for letting me present.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Congratulations on your awards.
Thank you.
Do any of your, do any of you have any questions? Any Commissioners, Commissioner Edwards?
No, but Miss, I want to compliment Ms. Best. She, as an agent, she's been to my house to help me with some weeds in my yard, so. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you so much. Mr. Brown?
That is all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam. Madam Chair, the next item we have is unfinished business, however, there is none to consider. We are going to move on to new business, which is item number ten, March twenty twenty-five. I apologize, consent? I apologize. At this time, we'll request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Any, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are going to move forward to number ten at this time for new business, March twenty twenty-five, the financial report. We're going to have a presentation by Ms. Brittany White, our finance director.
Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting the March twenty twenty-five financial report. March is the ninth year of our fiscal year, so that puts us roughly seventy-five percent of the way through the fiscal year of FY twenty-five. So I'll start out with our general fund revenues. To date, we have brought in eighty-three point nine million in revenues. That puts us right at eighty-five percent of our actual to budget. And these graphs just show the per month and then the actuals to budget. As you can see, a majority of our revenue has come in at this point in time, so we will drastically drop down in revenue after the month of January. So for our general fund expenditures, to date, we have spent seventy point three million. So that puts us right at seventy point five percent. So we're trending about five percent lower than usual, but June is always our biggest month of the year because we leave the books open for June for two months. So this graph just shows the actual months per year and then the actuals to budget expenditures. So at this point in the year, our revenues are thirteen point five million over our expenditures, but as we progress throughout the rest of the year, that number will get more as an even line. So we have three enterprise funds, our water fund, their revenue to, year to date is nine point three million. Their expenses to date is five point five million. Our solid waste fund, their revenue to date is six point six million, expenses to date, five million. And for our gaithers and factory sholes fund, revenue to date is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and expenses to date is a hundred and ninety-six thousand. Currently have three active SPOSS, the one remaining project on the two thousand and eleven historic jail project. So we have right around one point three million left there. Two thousand and seventeen SPOSS, we have around six active projects there still, so we have a remaining balance of thirty-two point five million. And currently, our twenty-three SPOSS has several active projects. We do show a remaining balance of negative one point eight, but we do have bonded projects, so that, that is not an issue. Our current SPOSS collections to date for the twenty-three is thirty-seven point nine million, so that puts us right about seven point nine over the original projections. And our impact fee fund, we currently have a balance there of one point eight million. After you take out our encumbrances, that's around three hundred and forty-two thousand for our encumbrances. And that wraps up the presentation, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
See, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Brittany. So you're comfortable with revenue versus expenses this, this, in going into the fourth quarter?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from Ms. White? Is there a motion? No motion? Okay. Thank you for your report.
I'm, I'm on the next one too.
Okay, I apologize, I wasn't sure. We are moving forward to item number eleven, and Ms. Brittany White will also be doing the item for number eleven. This is Superior Court Law Clerk Salary Adjustment. We also have Superior Court Judge Ken Nguyen is seeking approval to place the Newton law clerks on the same pay scale as Walton County for equality in the Alcove Circuit. Thank you, Ms. Brittany.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over now to Judge Nguyen for justification on this request, but I'm here to answer any financial questions that you have.
Thank you, Judge.
Good evening. Want to give just, just a brief summary, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. I think that you have a copy of the proposal and the cost. But the goal that we're trying to achieve here is to bring about parity or equality or equity in the pay between our law clerks. There's three Superior Court law clerks that are based here in Newton County that are paid by Newton County. We have one in Walton County that is assigned to one of the judges there, another in Walton County that is state-paid, that both Newton County and Walton County supplement the pay for that law clerk because the counties pay better than the state does, you know, for that position. And so we're really just trying to equalize the pay between the law clerks between counties to avoid, really to, to compensate them fairly for the same, same work that each does. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I will note that I think that we have money within our budget, remaining budget for the personnel budget for the remainder of the year to cover the costs for the remainder of the year. Will require an adjustment for the FY twenty-six budget.
Any questions from the board? Is there a motion? Commissioner Edwards, is there a second? Commissioner Henderson? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge Nguyen.
Y'all have a good evening.
Brittany, thank you.
Thank you. The next item we have on the agenda is item number thirteen, being presented by Chief Royce Turner. The item number thirteen indicates Fire Services is requesting approval to purchase twenty-five self-contained breathing apparatus from municipal emergency services to the lowest bidder.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is, was it the RFP that was put out for starting the replacement process for the SCBA's that Fire Services use? So we're starting out of, I think it's ninety-three or ninety-eight SCBA's. We've started the process to start cycling those older ones out and start replacing with new ones.
Any questions from the board? Do we have a motion? Commissioner Edwards, do we have a second? Commissioner Cooper? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Long?
So this is budgeted? And so why are they coming before us if it's budgeted? Just to, to get permission to spend the funds at this time?
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
All in favor? Okay. The motion's approved. Passed.
Madam Chair, we're moving forward to item number fifteen. This is being presented by Ms. Beth Smith. Resource Court is requesting approval of the Reconnect Contract. It's an app that sends participants reminders for their treatment. Costs six thousand, annually five hundred per month. And funding is the two-twelve date fund, and it is budgeted. Thank you, Ms. Beth.
Good evening, thank you, guys. Wanted to present that the app is a cloud-based software program, and it's used in the management of clients in judicial and recovery environments, which goes along with our mission with the Resource Court, which is mental health court, to collaborate and approach, a collaborative approach that will identify, supervise, and support members of our community diagnosed with severe mental health and involved in the criminal justice system. So to tell you a little bit about the program, the app, it is a program that allows accountability participants to have their schedule in front of them, to have support, to have monitor, medication management, and appointments. They struggle when they first get in our program, coming out of jail and not having schedules. And so this is going to be helpful in that. It also will help with curfew checks as it has facial recognition when they check in. And so even if we don't have enough surveillance officers in the field, this will help us keep tabs of the ones that are having issues.
Do you have any question? Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for this presentation. I just wanted to ask, and I, I guess, I don't know if this would be Brittany or if this would be our county manager. I see the funding here says two-twelve date fund. I don't know what that is. Do you more mind explaining what the two-twelve date fund is? Okay, Brit, I think Brittany's going to come back and explain.
So two-twelve date fund is a special revenue fund. So anything, any fund that starts with a two is a special revenue fund. So the date fund is a fund that's used for drug, drug abuse treatment, programming, things like that. So it's restricted just for drug, drug treatment, education, and things like that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I didn't know that. See, I learned something today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Commissioner Cooper, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, the motion's passed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have items number sixteen and seventeen being presented by our interim county manager, Mr. James Brown. Number sixteen is for Public Works. They're requesting board approval for change order number two, Nova Engineering and Environmental LLC authorizing the chairman to increase, increase the maximum contract price for professional services. This is also funded by SPOSS. Item number seventeen, Public Works is requesting board approval for change order number two for Nova Engineering and Environmental LLC authorizing the chairman to increase the maximum contract price for professional services. And this also is being funded by our SPOSS, both twenty twenty-three.
Good evening, again. These two items are for road projects to, and to increase the material testing that they have to do onsite. So this just to give the, the company that allotment to continue the testing protocol during the duration of that, that road project.
Are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Long?
Are these additional numbers to the twenty-three, twenty twenty-three through SPOSS? Because Brittany just showed us that, that, that twenty twenty-three is looking like it's getting to negative. So is it already in there?
It is not. So this would be in addition to either be done by the SPOSS, Overage, or any available funds that's remaining outside of those projects. So anytime you have a So, anytime you have a project, you have a contingency fund that's left in that project. So, those monies could come out of that contingency.
So, we, 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 we have the money to fund this out of SPOST money, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, it's not going over into any other funds or anything like that?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
Uh, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Patrick, can, since this is cha- same change order number, can this be one motion or does it have to be two?
I'd recommend two motions. There's, there may be some.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, we'll go with sixteen.
Ask for a motion on item sixteen.
Okay, on item sixteen, do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. The motion is approved. Now, on, um, number seventeen, do we have a motion?
Some move.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. So, the, um, motion is approved. Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, we are at item number eighteen, a discussion regarding purchasing and installation of flock cameras at all Newton County recreational parks, and this is being presented by our own Sheriff, Ezel Brown.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, and those of you who make up this board, it's good to be here. I have Dwayne here with me this afternoon. Our primary reason for being here on this afternoon is to perhaps get ahead of the curve uh, in light of some of the things and those things that's been going on, and particularly in our parks. Uh, I think all of you may be aware of some of the things that have happened, and there are some things that you may not know. And the general purpose being here tonight is to solicit your support in finance in a way that we can determine how we can, um, place cameras in the various parks. Let me back up one thing. I, I think it was a typo, and, and I'll accept that typo when we say flock cameras. Now, flock may be a part of that, but however, we're talking about other cameras, uh, such as, uh, um, multi-view cameras and so forth and so on. I'm not gonna get into the technical part of it, the technical part of it. I leave it up to those folks who can come here and explain it all the way. But my general, uh, purpose of being here tonight is to solicit your support on finding a way that we can place cameras throughout these parks. We know that it's a problem, and we know that, uh, our, our youth, as well as youth in the other counties, we know that they are finding parks to congregate. Uh, that's what happened out at Denny Dobbs, uh, just here recently. Um, and I feel certain that if cameras was placed at Denny Dobbs Park, the fact of it is that at the Office of Sheriff, we do not mind working hard, but it would have prevented a lot of the chasing down, uh, inaccurate information. It would have made our job much easier. And also, at the same time, could help prosecute cases as well and make it what I would say real live and plain to, if it ever get to a situation where you would have a jury to look at it. Now, with this said, I think it would be, I know it's beneficial. Uh, Dwayne is very familiar with our system that we have at the Office of Sheriff. We have a real-time live crime center. Uh, I think the manager, you have viewed it, and we're able to see many things that goes on in this community. I'm not gonna say every place that we have them, but it's just like sitting here looking at you tonight. And I think if we fail to move forward on such a prejudice this, I think we would be defeating our general purpose of making sure that we keep our community safe. Now, when you look at funding, we have, we took the initiative some time ago, and we have exhausted all of our grant fundings, those fundings that we could put in place ourselves. We have exhausted all of that by putting cameras in other places, and we've also worked with Dwayne. I think we got Beaver Park. We, we're close to getting Beaver Park online. We took that initiative to do it ourselves. But I think it's time now that we all together, work together on making this community safe. We all are responsible for that. So, I don't think it's a, a, a one department, uh, uh, responsible. I think it should be all of us inclusive in, in, in working on keeping our communities safe. We have reached out, and we have many of our, I say many, we have a couple, um, power companies who we expect, we have one that's on board with us, who will assist us with providing power. We're reaching out now. We have a MOU to another one, and, and I expect that they will come aboard too. So, that's where we at now. Uh, I realize that there are grants out there, but all of you know how grants are. You can put in for it today, and you may wait six months from now, and you may receive the grant, and you may not get the grant. What I see, the problem I see, we are turning the curve. We're around the corner, and, and I don't believe that we can wait until this corner connect. I think we need to go ahead and move forward now on finding funding so that we can put in these parks. I know, uh, during the campaign, the parks was a central part of, of the campaign, and it's been a central part of conversations ever since some of the parks was put in. Uh, so, now, I think it's time now that we need to rectify some of the decisions that we made some time ago. That's where I'm at. And, and I think if, uh, Dwayne liked to share, he can tell you, uh, things as it relate to recreation. As a matter of fact, we just had, and I don't know whether Dwayne is familiar with it, we just had a fight at the, well, Spring Hill, thank you for, uh, Spring Hill, and the mere fact that the camera system is there. Once we got a call about the fight, we was able to call the Intel Center. The Intel Center was able to go online and see exactly what was happening. We was able to get the person, or target the person who was responsible. We also had a, and I don't think this was reported, I received a call directly from a person who had concerns, uh, up at north of the county here, off of eighty-one, what's the name of that park? Stone, Stone Road. Stone Road, Stone Road Park. Um, there was a fight at Stone Road Park. Just, uh, I mean, a, a, a fight between ball teams. And it wasn't just one person, wasn't just two. It was several individuals on, on different games, teams fighting. I don't think law enforcement was called, but I, I get a call two days later inquiring whether or not did we receive any information about it, or whether or not would the park be closed. So, those are the things that we're running into. So, we're asking for your help, your support in finding finance so that we can move forward in an attempt to make our parks safe.
There any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Sheriff. So, um, I, I agree with, with Sheriff Brown. We've got to have some, uh, surveillance in these parks. Uh, and I think it was Sheriff Brown that stood before us, well, a couple of years ago, and reminded us that, uh, if we're gonna build parks, we gotta be prepared to support those parks with whatever means necessary to protect the people in those parks. Um, and a lot of these parks too, correct me if I'm wrong, Dwayne, connect, uh, or, or, or entrance, entrance ports for the, the trail now too. So, uh, a lot of the trails connect the parks, I guess you would say, and, and, uh, so, I, I think it's time. We, we've, uh, we've ponied up for the parks, and we're gonna have to pony up for the rest of it too. So, what, what I would ask though is, uh, maybe by next meeting or meeting after next, we have, uh, something, a summary of, of projected costs and maintenance costs and all that stuff that we can have for the board so we can move forward with the decision as, as quickly as we can anyway. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason, I think, had his hand up next, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you, Sheriff Brown, for that presentation. Um, I echo, um, what Commissioner Edwards, uh, stated, which is basically what I was gonna say. I know a couple of years ago, we did have this conversation that we were basically in need of these, and I fully support, um, making sure that we find a way to incorporate and implement these cameras, um, throughout, um, our major parks uh, as, as quickly as we possibly can. Uh, I know this isn't the, uh, complete solution, um, but it would definitely help. Um, it, it's one of, there's a, a couple of different things that we've gotta start doing to kind of make it happen. Uh, and I think, you know, having these cameras in place would definitely be an enhancement, uh, for our law enforcement. Um, and I think, yeah, I would, you know, encourage this board. It would behoove us, uh, to find a way to find the funding to be able to implement these. Uh, I know it'll be, uh, a major help to our Parks and Rec Department as well. Uh, and I think it'll just be an overall help to our community where we can be able to address a lot of these concerns that are occurring and happening now. Um, a lot of things are going on. Prayer vigils are now happening. Uh, we got nonprofits that are stepping in wanting to, uh, have these conversations, having these discussions, uh, to change our youth mindsets. Um, and so, I think collectively, doing all of these things, uh, including, uh, having, uh, this camera equipment in place uh, will kind of help us address some of these concerns. And so, I, I completely support, um, the presentation today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I remember a few years back, Sheriff Brown came before the board, and he was, and we were, um, we were talking about gang members and, and how some or another day had, uh, was attempting or invaded Newton County, and he was requesting funding, and he didn't receive the funding. Well, you know, we got gangs, and I'm not saying this, all our problems, and, and if some of you go on Facebook, and my wife, she stays on, saying to be on Facebook, you can see the gangs on Facebook. They had a little upside down, you know, photo with the guns and stuff in parks, and you look close, you see what park that they're in. So, uh, we're gonna have to do something. Uh, we're gonna have to work with our office of sheriff. Because if we don't, we're gonna lose a lot of our kids, our teenagers. And it hurts me every time that, uh, the few times that I've had to run down the street and see them. A guy's son being loaded in a car, caused the ambulance was scared to come in the community to take to the hospital, who later died. That's, that's a bad feeling. So, um, and I don't wanna ever have to experience that again. And so, that's why we have stuff in place. I think Dwayne had talked about a little bit, the one meeting, uh, along with our interim county manager James, was about park rangers, and I, and I had been thinking of maybe a little bit about that too as well. But I think I would be, well, maybe a trained deputy, running a park ranger, somebody who, who maybe could, um, call for help if we needed. And I do know we need those cameras. I know we need that. We need, we need, um, volunteers to come out, you know? Church, uh, a church, church women come out when you see a whole bunch of folks in there, start, start talking to them about Jesus, and, and, and that may deter them from it. And, 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 and that's a start, but I do know we have to, as a community, do something for our kids. And I'm just close with this one last thing. I was talking about the plan to some people that I had heard, you know, about the fifty-eight thousand dollars for, of some account where the kids can come in and give them, that's what we are desperately needed. And I don't think fifty-eight thousand dollars for some account that's gonna deter kids from going out, uh, maybe shooting or getting in trouble or, or jumping on the elderly person like myself, and I, I, you know, deter them from doing stuff like that. We gotta take out town with our youth. And, you know, and, and start doing something to try to guide them in, in the right direction. Because it seem like, I don't know, uh, we've been blessed so far about where I would look towards Atlanta, turn a new, Atlanta shooting in up there, so doing something. But, uh, they're moving down this way. Just, just take a good look at your Facebook, and I think you'll see, see it for yourself. Thank y'all.
Any other question? Thank you, Sheriff Brown. We appreciate all the hard work and hard work your department does. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, and thank you for your support.
Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number nineteen for discussion of the Nelson Heights Community Center.
Madam Chair, I'm the one that brought this to the agenda as an item tonight. Um, one of the things that we talked about is we want to get moving again on that Nelson Heights Center. At least get the center opened, um, get the repairs necessary to get the center open for, for the summer months, and, uh, have some kind of mentoring programs or whatever. We're gonna choose to have it at Nelson Heights. But having the center closed for two years is not serving anybody in that community. Um, I, I took J.C. home after the last meeting, and he and I drove up into the center and looked around, and I've been to a, a meeting about, about four or five months ago, I was there at the center um, for something that Newton County had. But we gotta get the center open. So, I, I don't want to, we had taken it and done a sixty-day table on this, and that's why I wanted to bring it back up. I don't want it to go ninety, a hundred and twenty days, you know, six months, because, oh, I really feel like the kids over there, definitely, this summer is gonna be a challenge, and, um, you know, talk about needing cameras. We need things to do. And I'm not a proponent of being a babysitter or daycare, so I'm the one that he's fussing about over here about the fifty-nine thousand. But I do think if we have that building there, we do need to get it open and operated and, and, you know, and at least get that part open. I know we can't do everything right now, but I don't wanna do the entire eight-hundred thousand dollars before we open the building back up. And, and that was the reason for bringing it to the agenda, to get that building back open.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
I'm the troublemaker tonight, so. So, um, I know we've had at least one organization with what I feel like was proper programming. I'm not an expert, but I, and I, from what I understand, we have another organization that, or, or, or formal organizations for all I know that, that, that have programming that would be needed in that, in that community. So, uh, I believe, uh, Commissioner Long probably expresses what we all want to express is, is, uh, we're, we're ready to get moving on it. Um, I know you can't rush these things, but we, we promised, I remember a certain gentleman sitting in this audience who, who, I think, called me by name and said, "I'm gonna hold you to that, Commissioner Edwards." So, um, we, uh, we, we wanna, we wanna get something done for the, especially for the kids of that community over there. And, and I know you've got a lot on your plate right now, but it's, just don't let it die down. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Henderson?
If I'm not mistaken, we had a, uh, it was a meeting that we kind of had there with, uh, with the interim county manager, James. And, um, the question was posed, well, how many other organizations, uh, and he can speak for himself, how many organizations? It was kind of interesting. And I think we said none. And it's very important, I think, that you have, uh, people who are in the community, especially who were, who are raised in the community, part of, of Nelson Heights. And have, you know, all, you know, the program opening for all of Newton County. And, uh, there were some plans that was, um, presented, I think. And I think it was a lot of notes taken and stuff, and, and I, and I kind of agree with them, but I think we came out with something positive. So, if you could, um, uh, James, could you kind of give the board a, maybe from your take, a kind of a little bit of a take of what- of what we talked about today?
Absolutely, Commissioner. Um, so just give, give the board a quick update. I did provide a construction um calendar for Nelson Heights. As of right now, I talked to Mr. Prime, is that the construction is slated to be complete by the mid to late part of July. Um, they are looking to see if there's a possibility to wrap up the inside of Nelson Heights Community Center earlier, uh, and then look at the, a way for it to safely allow for a after-school care or some type of activity to be involved safely for the community to utilize that facility during the rest of the phase of the project. So we are still currently looking at that. But as of right now, the full completion of the construction is slated to be completed by mid to late July. Uh, we did, Commissioner Henderson and myself did meet with uh one of the organizers for that facility this afternoon, uh, actually early this, uh, early this afternoon. Uh, I think it was a positive meeting. Um, uh, moving forward, they have addressed some of the concerns, not concerns, but some of the opportunities that the, their programming could benefit the community. We are looking at them as well. Um, total of, to answer your question, there are a total of nine uh community organizers that we are looking at, uh, to see what best fits. Uh, but we would definitely keep the board abreast of all of that, as well as Commissioner Henderson, since it is in his district. Uh, we want him to participate um in those meetings. Uh, as of right now, the only meeting that we have taken thus far is Taylor Made, and we are following back up with the rest of them that uh Mr. Cooper had bef, um, during the earlier part, late part of last year. So we are looking at all those uh additional partners to see which one best fits for that community.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna close with this. Uh, for three years, it and I think it was, had been budgeted from thirty to forty thousand dollars a year. Uh, I guess, I wanna say by this board, uh boards. And for it to be closed for three years at four thousand dollars a year, I think it's about a, I made it kinda bad, somebody hit me, is it a hundred and twenty thousand? It'd be like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I think. I'm subject to a correction. But my point is this, with a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you could, you could get that little pro- summer program that Sheriff Brown had mentioned and and Taylor Made had talked about, of participating in with them. And you could do that summer program out of, from the money that came from Nelson Heights, that, uh, for that program, and then have uh have enough money to owe, to continue to give them at least that uh four thousand, for four thousand dollars a year for maybe one year. So, um, you know, we, we've been taken uh from that center, and I think it's, it should be time we give back to them. And put some young peoples in, some young peoples in in charge who would have longevity, and think about the community as a whole. And like I said, I'm closing on this. Um, we had the foresight to see that there needed to be cameras out there. And I think Commissioner Long and I, we go back a long ways, we rode around all to everywhere in Savannah and stuff, and we had a good time, her and her husband and and some of the other commissioners. And uh, we had the foresight to understand that there was a need for cameras. We had, we had enough foresight to know that when you had a large gathering of teenagers and kids, that you need some adults, some volunteers, and that's where we had, people in the community go out there and sit with them. And if they'll start be raising H E L L, then naturally they'll call the police or or whatever. And what they need to keep, keep them kinda quiet a little bit, and it worked. But soon as you cut it off, you know, it comes back with a little bit of violence, and you had to call the sheriff and say, well, can you just send somebody and tell them they need to go. It's dark, past dusk. And so I think that we need to come back, you know, um, and not only in Nelson Heights, but in town, Newton County. And I think we need to get our churches involved. And so, um, you know, I've been thinking about what I wanna start, go back to every church in Newton County and saying, this is what we need to do in order to help our youth, and to get us back on track. And lastly, uh, we need to put Jesus, we talk about Jesus. I think as adolescent, when I was growing up, I learned about Jesus, I was nonviolent, because, you know, I, I, you know, I was looking towards the hills. And so if we can get some of our kids to today, this day in time, do the same, what a blessing it would be for all of us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'll make this very brief. Um, I just wanna encourage the board as we are moving forward um with uh Nelson Heights Community Center. I I think it would be a great idea if we can kinda model what we do with Washington Street. Um, basically, you know, it is a county-owned facility. Um, we, we provide the maintenance. Uh, we make sure that uh everything is taken care of. Um, and and it's a possibility that, uh, because when I look at these various nonprofit organizations, a a lot of them don't have all-day activities. Um, and so it may be an opportunity where you may be able to have multiple. Um, I know when Taylor Made came before us, they stated that they wanted to have, you know, several different um programs and partners to come through. Um, and so I I think, to me, that sounds like that may be a great idea. Um, you know, maybe it won't be just one specific nonprofit or one specific organization um that is actually uh in that facility. Um, you know, the county will run it, the county will maintain it, the county will make sure that, you know, things are taken care of. And we just allow these various um programs to take place whenever they need it. So there may be some programming that may be during the day. There may be, you know, a different programming that might wanna come in and have after-school. There may be another one that might wanna come in in the evening. And so we just kinda look at that from, you know, a whole, a a full, complete perspective. Um, uh, but still allow it not where we're actually giving funding to a specific programmer to maintain and operate it. Um, now, once again, of course, we have a policy in place. I think that this board, we voted on it a few years ago. You know, if there is a nonprofit that wants to become an appropriation, uh, we do have a process for that. Um, and we take, we stick to that policy unless we change that policy. We stick to that policy that this board agreed to. Um, if there's any nonprofit that wants to become an appropriation, we can do that, but not actually give X amount of dollars to a specific uh programmer to run and own, to run and operate a county-owned facility. So I think we should really kinda model it after kinda how we do it with Washington Street. So I want to encourage the board to kinda keep that model in mind. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Henderson?
Um, thank you, Commissioner Mason. You're right. But I just, just wanna point this out concerning Wash, Washington Street. Washington Street is also in District Four Two as well. Uh, the county does not pay any light bills at all for Washington Street. And prior to when my son and myself were running Nelson Heights, they didn't pay any utility bills at at all to at that particular time. And it was taken from that, um, what, thirty-eight thousand, four thousand dollars a year. So there was no bill paid. What we had wanted, and I think what we had discussed, is is just having maybe one resolution or one, one plan for all of them. You know, not just uh one for Washington Street, one for Nelson Heights. We wanted to have it consistent. And I think it's, when I looked at the, they were playing, they were different. All of them were different. I even have notes and stuff at home, which I don't wanna go back into old stuff, 'cause I'm writing a book. But um, uh, but we, what we just want, I think, what the community want, was that when it was first built out, had nothing to do with it. The community, the young folks in the community started knocking out windows and stuff. I can remember our former Commissioner Levy matters, okay, and tell me, and say, well, what can we do to stop them tearing up? Said, we made a substantial investment in Nelson Heights, and they just tearing it down. I said, you got to make the people who live in the community a part of that community, still in the building. And so I think that's what we're gonna have, we we're gonna have to do if it's gonna be successful out there. 'Cause I'm gonna tell you something, these young people don't take some of the stuff this old man like J.C. used to take and and talking quiet. And and they want action, they want people to do what, what they think is right for them as a whole. But I think you'll find out, and Sheriff Brown, he know about them, 'cause he had to deal with him and his staff on a, on a daily basis. But if we go in and show them that we're trying to do something positive in the community, and that we're gonna include them, and have some young people and people that they know, hey, it'll be a success. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, we're at item number twenty. This is for our citizen comments. This is our general citizen comments, section item number twenty. We are allowing each citizen to come up and make citizen comments. And they are each allotted three minutes, and the timer is actually listed above on the screen. When you do approach, please provide your first and last name and your address, so that we can have it on record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's James Peterson. I live at seventy Crooked Creek Way, Covington, Georgia. I will be available after this meeting and on Thursday, if you would like to question me where I got my information from. Uh, I would like to address the P card usage in this county in January. The P card use was thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Over five thousand of that was spent on fast food. Two thousand, one dollars was at Walmart. A thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-eight cents was spent at local grocery stores. We're also paying for Hulu Plus, two subscriptions, two subscriptions to Hulu, two to Netflix, and one to FUBU. We also paid eight hundred and ninety-four dollars to Let's Burn It, a wood burning place. In February, we spent a total of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and thirty-six cents, of which four thousand, fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents was to fast food, salad-to-go, one there, with a thousand dollars in one-day expenditure. Walmart was three thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Grocery stores was a thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. And we're still paying for all of the subscriptions to Hulu and Netflix. In March, we spent sixty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-three cents. Two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars was in fast food and restaurants. Two thousand, twenty-one dollars and twelve cents to Walmart. And two thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents for a grocery store. That month, we also spent four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents at Guitar Center. Um, all P cards are on auto payment. Out of, out of sight, out of mind, I would recommend that you take that off. If we just looked at the total expenditures on P card for those three months, it was a hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And P cards, you do not get the government exclusion on sales tax. And so if we had used another method of securing those items, we would've saved over seven thousand dollars. A lot of software is being purchased on P cards. As you know, if you buy one, it's so much. If you buy two, the price drops down. I would recommend that all software such as Adobe and Zoom go through the I T department. Also, all travel and hotel reservations go to, go through Human Resources, so that we can get the government discount on travel and hotel, or the conference rate, whichever is cheapest. That would be my recommendation on the use of P cards. They should only be used in case of emergency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dave Norton of New Bern. Uh, James was showing me his paperwork a minute ago for the P card usage. And what he's had, I, just reading what he wrote, I have no idea. I have no way to confirm it. But from what he showed me, Marcelo Baines is still using a P card. Uh, so that needs to be checked and made sure that what, the info he has is correct. Uh, but I came up here to invite everyone out to New Bern next Saturday, the twenty-sixth of April. We are having our thirty-seventh annual Horny Head Festival. That's a little mina in the creek that has horns on its head. And it's a fishing tournament, but we also have like forty-plus vendors. It's to raise money for our hundred-plus-year-old schoolhouse there in New Bern. And for those that don't know, I have a little hobby farm out there in New Bern. I raise rare heritage breed, heritage breed turkeys. I ship them all over the country, although the post office is kinda fighting us this year. Uh, but we do a, I do a little fundraiser. You may have seen it before, when the high schools used to do a, for their booster club, do a fundraiser where a little, they put a cow out on a football field. Wherever the cow does his business, you win the raffle money. I do it with turkeys. I have a little ten-by-ten bin. I square it off. I sell the squares. It's a fifty-fifty raffle. And when I sell all the squares, I lay my turkey in there, and she goes about, feeds around, does her business, somebody wins half the pot. And the schoolhouse makes money. So, come out and join us. We have, I think, forty-something vendors out there. It's a good time, good fun, little small, quiet town for now. And come by and see us, meet the birds, and we can even talk a little bit about the future of Newton County too, if you feel so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Greg Shaw. My address is seventy-one forty-three Lassiter Street, Covington, Georgia. Good afternoon to everyone. I'm here on behalf of the Nelson Heights Community Center in Nelson Heights, which I am a lifetime there. I was born and raised there. And I just wanna say thank you for what you're trying to do to that center. I was the first recipient of the five oh one C three when it first opened on fifteen years ago or more. It's a vital community. It it has to be open for not just the kids, but for the community, as well as everyone in the community. Uh, I would listen to everyone. I I I know about the nonprofits as well. And just, just being here tonight opened up a lot of things for me to see that we are transparent here in Newton County. We are the one of the most diverse county in Newton County. And I've been working in this county for over fifty-some years, as far as doing anything I can to give back to the community. The young lady that came on here earlier talking about the four-H Club, I only met her a few minutes ago. The first thing I talked to her about what I was here for, she reached out to me just that quick and said, I have a nonprofit with the four-H Club. I can bring things into the community. I can bring anything with agriculture, and all you have to do is just ask. Thirty minutes ago, that's all you got, thirty minutes. And we already have people on board. So all I'm telling you right now is thank you for your time. Put it together. Sheriff Brown has programs ready to go there. I ran a program out there for over seven years. Everybody, most of you know that we have the GED program. We were partnered with Washington Street, Emory Oxford College, and all the other facilities here. We were the first county out of the state of Georgia to, for seven thousand people to get GEDs in this county. Nobody never touched us, and I did that. So I just wanna let you know that we are here for you. I, we all just need to be here for us. And we need y'all, just like we, you know, we need each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? This time we'll close the public, oh, I'll come forward then.
I just, it'd be so sad to see that, see that fellow sitting there in the dark, when I have to come home at night or go out, and it's sitting there in the dark. And this, I know it was available some years ago. I worked there when it was first open, to help with the kids, and to see it dark, and nothing happening there. But then they have this nice, nicer ball court right across the street from it. It's so much the kids can do and and participate in out there. And also, you can use this center for different functions, church functions, social functions. I've been there fifty years. I've seen it happen. So I just wanna say that. And God bless you all. And I hope we'll do well, where y'all can do something. And God bless you all, and I hope we'll do well with, y'all can do something well with it to bring it back alive. Thanks a lot.
Ma'am, would you mind stating your name for us?
Oh, my name is Dorothy Smith. Dorothy Smith, and I live down the street on Puckett Street at eighty-one twenty-one. I've been there over fifty years. I live in the, on the, on the lot where my parents live, and I have relatives throughout the community.
Well, thank you so.
I'm very familiar with it.
Thank you so much.
And I'm glad to be here. I've only been here maybe one or two times some years ago, but I'm glad to be here tonight to hear the different voices and the different opinions, y'all, and the different things y'all discuss.
Well, thank you for coming. Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak? Well, now we'll close the, um, public comments.
Madam Chair, at this time, it is open for our board comments, and we can start with, um, Commissioner Edwards.
Commissioner? Commissioner Mason? Commissioner Cooper? Mr. Henderson?
I, I just wanna say this, and, and I'll be brief. In nineteen ninety-six, a group of peoples in Newton County, uh, asked me to maybe look into saving the old R.L. Cousins School. They wanted, they wanted to buy it, but we didn't have any money to buy it. So we leased it. I talked, um, I think Mr. Fowler and his group into leasing to the county. Because it was something that I felt and I think the people felt were very important to the, uh, to the community. And so after years of leasing it, it finally came up for sale and nobody seen it wanna buy it on the board. And so I said, well, I remember I told him, I said, well, you don't, you don't have to buy, I mean, you don't have to buy, you don't do nothing, just forget about it. I said, but the people will not sit down in the community and allow you to take an historic school such as that one. And how they work so hard, the civil rights in our community for all of us, to let it just be pushed down. And so they bought it. Board of Commissioners bought it. And now I'm pleased to say that we're gonna, we're gonna have a, a voting precinct over there. You know, there was, there was a vision, you know, that I had to play the, um, party in it to it as well. Move our, our voting over that way and the computers too as well, voting machines and a, uh, climate control, uh, room or building. And so, but the, the good news is, is it gonna be where you can go and look at, uh, go inside and have functions, go inside and have meetings. And, uh, our Alumni Association of, of, of seniors too will be a, a major part in, into that as well. And I know we'll forget, and I'm closing now, that, um, we were talking about it. Uh, we went before the Splash Committee, Reverend Harold Carr, and we had went, myself and my son, Anthony, uh, before the Splash Committee to get a, um, to get funding, and they turned us down. But just when you think you're lost, and this is for some people who may understand where I'm coming from, you haven't lost. Because, because it came before the Board of Commissioners. And I know we'll forget Commissioner Ronnie Coward, and so we asking everybody to pray for him too as well, 'cause he's going through some stuff and, but we all go through some stuff, but, uh, he's going through something really. But, uh, he said, I'm in that school, said, I went to the school. He said, you know, and I have some friends over there, and he said, we need to fix up some of the stuff that we started. And there was my vote, Commissioner Sanders' vote, and then the whole board, the whole board, we all, all of us voted unanimously to fix that building up for eight, with eight million dollars. And so I'm proud to say it's gonna be a jewel in our community and it's a, be a place that you can come for a reflection. Because in order to know where you're going, you gotta know where you came from, and we all came from together. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Long? No? Um, do we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, I'm in favor. We are adjourned.